Welcome. Today I'm sitting down with Adam Dunick.
It's Dunick, yeah.
Dunick, okay, great.
Easier than it looks.
Good. And he is the president and CEO of the Minneapolis Downtown Council. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, thank you Terry for having me. I appreciate it. My name is Adam Dunick, the president and CEO of Minneapolis Downtown Council and the lesser known Downtown Improvement District. President and CEO of both organizations have both been around different amounts of time. The Downtown Council has been around close to 70 years. We're in our 70th year now. And the Downtown Improvement District has been around since 2009. But both organizations work very closely together. They are slightly separate. They have different missions and different purposes and certainly history, but they're both really related to the future of downtown focused on that.
And so is the Minneapolis Downtown Council a for-profit business, a nonprofit? What's the?
Yeah, we're technically a nonprofit organization. We're a business association, but we largely think of ourselves as more than that. It's a little bit of our membership base is businesses and certainly the largest employers downtown and a lot of employers downtown, but we also have nonprofit members and we have members that are, you know, certainly they engage in the city in different way, arts and culture, the theater arts, the venues that put on those performances, the sports teams. So it's not a typical chamber business association. There is the Minneapolis Chamber. There's other groups that kind of do that kind of work. We are very place-based and focused on downtown. So it's broader than just a business association, but we are a 501(c)(6). And same with the Downtown Improvement District. Technically both nonprofit entities.
Okay, so you know, I've heard about the Downtown Council for years and it seems like they come up, they do a lot of advertising for different events. So like when something goes on like, the like a festival downtown, are you're just promoting it or how do you, how is, what's your relationship to something like that?
Yeah, there's it's a couple of different ways in which we interact. So I'll just use a couple of examples. The two events that we're most well-known for, the Aquitennial Celebration in the middle of summer and Holiday Dazzle, which we brought back to Niccollet Mall last winter. Those are two events that we fundraise for, get sponsorships for, we produce and promote. But then there's a lot of other events that are happening every week downtown that our communications and marketing team helped to promote. Our events team and sometimes our community impact team are working to pull permits and working to facilitate all the logistics of an event and work in partnership. And that's everything from the Heart Walk to Taste of Minnesota to big, large-scale events that people know well. The USA Gymnastics Trials that came to town. We work really closely with the groups that put those on to both put them on and then make them a huge success. And so some of the events were driving and producing and others were just a partner.
Okay. And do you, is there a relationship with the Convention Center?
Yes and no. Again, partners, strong partners with Meet Minneapolis. I'm on their board. They often at times have a person that's ex officio member on our board. So we're very engaged with each other. We work on our long-range plans together. But for all practical purposes, the Convention Center is run through Meet Minneapolis, which is more the tourism and convention business side of the, of the work that happens downtown. Also, Meet Minneapolis focuses on all of Minneapolis. So they focus on the cultural districts. They focus on uptown, north, northeast, other parts of the city, the university and so forth. Meet Minneapolis kind of exists in that, in that convention bureau space along with Bloomington and St. Paul and other regional, attracting regional, national events. So yeah, slightly different group.
Okay. Well, that's good to know because I definitely, I kind of thought there was a connection. So now obviously, I mean, I invited you here today and thank you for coming because there's, you know, a lot of people asking questions about what's happening downtown and stuff like that. So why do you think, like I live in South Minneapolis, why should someone like myself or someone who doesn't live or work downtown? You know, why should they be concerned about the future of downtown?
It's a great question and one I think about all the time. And certainly it's a big part of what drew me and attracted me to the job itself and working to run, both run the organization, working to support the city and downtown. There's an old saying that so as goes downtown Minneapolis, so goes the city, so goes the region, so goes the state. And it has both an economic and a hugely correlated economic connection to the rest of the region and state as well as a social one. And you know, I think there's, you don't have to look farther than the last couple of years of the challenges that downtown commercial property values face and the connection between property taxes that residents are going to continue to see increase. And we feel that across the city. We feel that across the region. Both downtown Minneapolis and St. Paul have had really particularly harsh times and a difficult time bouncing back post pandemic. We, we can look around the country and see a few things. We can see that all cities are grappling with some of these challenges, but some of them are dealing with them differently. And some of them felt those impacts differently depending on how quickly people return to office and work in person. Depending on how quickly nightlife and arts and activities and sporting events and other things started to bring people back together. And depending on how public safety, both perceptions and the real impacts of crime have had an impact on our city and our region. So all the, all that to say is downtown plays an enormous part in driving our city's economic engine. You think about it, just along Niccollet Mall from Washington Avenue down to the Convention Center, you have three of the largest employers in the state and in the country of Target, Excel Energy and US Bank. And around our whole downtown community of other large-scale employers. We have over 400 members right now. And typically, you know, the downtown employees, before the pandemic, we would tell people 200 to 220,000 people per day would come down to the office, nine to five. And before the pandemic, people had to come to the office. That really wasn't a question. There were some movements towards telework and people working from home and some flexibility. And that all got accelerated and downtown became not just a place where people had to go, but people could choose to go. And so we have to think about what that means for the future of downtown. I can talk ad nauseam about the, our evolution of our downtown, how we've come up and then gone back down and seen challenges, but know that at least five years past the pandemic, we have to stop using that as an excuse. That's not a reason for people not to come to the office or to go out to concerts or sporting events or, or sort of typical nightlife activities of downtown. What are the things that are working? What are the things that aren't? And what I'm proud to say is our city generally is on the upswing. There's still some challenges. And I think, you know, in a position of like mine that I have, we're both a booster and a supporter of downtown. So you're not going to see me, you know, speak ill of what's happening downtown, but I'm also going to be, try to be a realist. And I think that that's an important part of what I do and what our organization does too. When we look at where we are today and what we, what we have to do to keep moving our city forward.
Okay, um, that was a lot. I'm going to try and go back through a little bit of that. Actually, one of the first things I was thinking of, you mentioned you have communications teams and different teams. Like how, how many people are employed by the Downtown Council?
Sure. Downtown Council and Downtown Improvement District together, it's about 34, 35. Some employees work for both. They, some percentage of the time is a little bit of doing one and a little bit of doing the other. And some are just purely a Downtown Improvement District employee, for example, but it's, it's 30, right around 35 typically.
So just the, the council, their funding is, comes from the city or is it private donors or is it the state or how, how does it get funded?
Yeah, the Minneapolis Downtown Council is primarily funded through member dues and sponsorships for the events that we do. We do occasionally get some city funding for, but it's usually very prescribed. So for example, we have gotten money to put on Warehouse District Live or we've gotten money from the Vibrant storefronts work that the city does through CPED. Those are just recent examples. And then the county sometimes will, we work with the county as a partner to, the Downtown Improvement District employs some social worker outreach programs. That is what I talk about, part of our layered approach to public safety and outreach. So we do have some public funds here and there. It's a, it's a pretty small percentage, largely membership dues and sponsorships. And that's the Downtown Council. The Downtown Improvement District is almost exclusively funded through our rate payers, through the building owners that opted in to the Improvement District itself. So back in 2009, a block, a part of downtown, 10 by 12 block part in the downtown core all opted in to be, to form the Downtown Improvement District. And at the time, it was a little bit of a controversy. There were many members that thought, hey, why are we paying this extra assessment for things that the city should be doing anyways? But there are other parts of our constituency, some members that said, this is great. We can do, we can assess this ourselves. We can govern it ourselves. And then we can have these resources to do some of the things that we want to see from safety improvements to cleaning the streets, to having better beautification and green landscaping and streetscaping of the, of the properties that we take care of.
I want to dig into that definitely a little bit more. One thing that I keep hearing about the commercial properties losing value downtown and, and you mentioned property taxes earlier. So I'm just wondering how significant an issue like me sitting in, you know, my house, I'm like, well, it, you know, it feels like I'm disconnected from whatever is happening with these buildings downtown. So is it something that I should, as a voter resident, be worried about or think about or?
Absolutely. And I say that because, and we've talked to the council members about this, talked to Hennepin County about this as much and as frequently as we can, just the impacts of the tax base downtown affect everybody else. And that's changed a little bit over the last 20, 25 years, at least as long as I've been involved in public policy. The tax structure of commercial properties versus residential used to be 60% was paid for by commercial and 40% residential. That's almost completely inverted. By now, that's set sometimes more by the state policy frankly than the, than the local decision-making. So that commercial.
Say more about that. What do you mean? Like how, how can the state or what rules are they putting in place that would cause that switch?
It's just a policy that the state enacts about what, what commercial tax rates are, what, what, they don't set property tax levies. Don't, don't, I don't want to be confusing to folks, but that's largely set by, in our instance here, the city of Minneapolis, Hennepin County and the school board. That's where the property tax money goes. And, and so the, the way in which they assess their taxes is one way, but the way in which the state sets its tax policy also has an impact. And there you just, there used to be a larger share of state taxes that were taken from commercial and industrial properties as opposed to residential, just the way in which that, that formula worked. Because essentially property taxes are, are a combination of what you're taxed, what you pay, and then what credits are given and what local government aid pays for. And things like fiscal disparities funds that in the Twin Cities are supposed to set up so that property tax wealthy communities share their tax base with property tax poor, poorer communities. Communities that struggle to have a stronger property tax base. Cause in, you know, the, just to try to sum it up as best I can, Minneapolis as a city, Minnesota as a state, has tried to have a more, you know, quote progressive tax structure where there's a lot of revenue sharing. So it's confusing to follow that, that property tax trail of how you pay, why, why you pay what you pay. But the long version, the shorter story is that breakdown is less, it's less driven by commercial industrial property tax. And that's, that's frankly, that's a good thing because the drop in values now, it will have a ripple effect, but it won't be as big as if this happened 20 years ago or 30 years ago, when it made up a bigger share of the property tax dollars.
Well, so there's two things that I thought of while you were speaking. One is I've heard in, Mayor Frye talk a couple of times about how there's some buildings downtown who pay more in taxes than like whole wards or at least, you know, many blocks within those wards. So is that still the case, do you think or?
Yeah, we used to say that typically there were a few buildings that paid as much as a ward and I'd have to look at the tax valuations currently to see if that's the case. I think that that's changed. I think that that has come down some. But the, the principle still remains the same, which is the value of, and then the property taxes collected by downtown properties carries a lot, a huge share of the property tax base for the rest of the city. That's why historically, everybody has always supported downtown and understood its importance. Past council presidents, past council members, North Side, South Side, you name it. Everybody understood that the golden goose of our city, and then again, by extension, the region and the state is downtown and how well it's doing here. And I think it's hard to figure out where we are right now because property tax valuations and then assessments and how people pay kind of lag. So if a building is dropping in value now, they're still probably in discussions with the city about what their, their tax rate will be. And we've seen, seen some of that. So if you have, I'll just use an example because it's a more recent one. If you have like the Wells Fargo Center that, you know, was valued at X amount of dollars, you know, $200 million, $300 million not that long ago. And then just sold for, I think it was 80 some million recently. Other buildings have been less. The old Ameriprise buildings sold for about $6 million recently. But that may have been on the tax roll for 100 or 200 million dollars. So some of these buildings are in real, it's a real mismatch. The more recent study I've seen, I think at the Minneapolis and St. Paul Business Journal did an assessment of the top 15 properties. And I think 13 of the 15 of them dropped in value over the last few years and the total value was around a billion dollars. So we're talking a number of buildings that dropped in value of, you know, tens of millions, if not 100 million dollars.
And so, and is that valuation determined by basically the number of tenants they have and what they're paying in rent?
I mean, the valuation is essentially what it would sell for, what it's, what it's worth to somebody if it were to go up for sale or if mortgages have to be, if, if, if a building has to go back to the bank because they can't pay their mortgage and then they have to renegotiate with the lender. So it's, it's not exactly a cut and dry number. What I try to tell people is that, that's an important matter for investors. It's an important matter for the value of our city. The good news is on the other side is at least buildings are for sale and selling. They're not sitting on auctions on, you know, without any interest. People are investing in the building. Sometimes ownership has gone from national or international to local. And some of these companies that are buying the buildings are interested in investing in them and trying to keep them up and trying to figure out how they, how under a recovery circumstance, we're bouncing back stronger. And so that's, there's some good news and there's, there's some, and there's some, you know, in the bad news, there is some hopefully, some signs of good news too, that we can get excited about in terms of kind of what's going to come next. Because there's other cities that they've seen businesses leave. They've seen job numbers not just remain flat, but go backwards. You know, St. Louis is an example recently that we've seen. People are leaving the city and going out to the suburbs. We're not seeing that in Minneapolis. And you know, I don't want to, you know, knock on wood, we're, we're in a, a good place now, but every time big businesses, big companies, their leases are up or hopeful that they stay downtown or hopeful that they're in a position where they want to grow their business, not downsize their footprint. And we've seen some consolidation too, where some of our larger employers have not renewed leases in St. Paul or Bloomington or other parts of the region, but they've consolidated their workforce downtown.
So a follow-up question there. You mentioned, you know, what's happening in St. Louis and other cities. Do you or your team like travel to other cities to see how, because I know this property valuation situation isn't unique to Minneapolis.
Right.
So do you regularly go and meet with other councils or other cities and see how they're handling it?
We do, we do. In fact, and last, last fall, we had a couple of groups in here. There was a group from Raleigh Durham, North Carolina. There was another group, I think that same week from Kansas City. Sometimes the chamber leads those groups. Sometimes we do. We're also members of a group called the International Downtown Association. The acronym is IDA. And so there's other groups that are like ours. Some are business associations. Some are improvement districts, like service districts. And they have an annual conference. Last year it was in Seattle. A few of our senior leaders went there. We typically present at those conferences. The conference this year, I believe is in Washington DC. I didn't make it to Seattle last year, but I did go to Toronto with the Minneapolis Chamber with their, what's called the inner city leadership visit.
So how, how are we stacking up to other metropolitan areas of our, of this size or bigger in terms of stability and attracting new business and things?
Yeah, I'll try not to give too boring and measured of a glass half full and glass half empty read because it's kind of like my last answer about the downtown real estate market, which is the good news is we're seeing some improvements. And the bad news is, is we had a long ways to go to improve. We kind of started lower and we started further back in people being, working in office and in person. And we started further back in terms of people coming downtown for event attendance and that sort of thing. And so a lot of the metrics we look at, we're still lagging, you know, and I think we're, we get considered in cities like Portland and San Francisco and Denver and cities that have been the hardest hit by the pandemic and the slowest to recover. Baltimore is another example that we get compared to at times. But that being said, there's some positive news there too. Those, the same studies that track cell phone movements, the Toronto study that was really tough on us for a couple of years. Last year said we recovered the most in terms of people coming downtown. And it was large, again, largely driven by evening and weekend attendance, not so much that Monday through Friday. So that's the thing I'm trying to think through more, how we play a role in leaning on that. There's, there's some employers that are just going to make decisions on their in-office, in-person policy, just the way that, that they're going to, they're just going to go about that themselves. There are some that are open to, you know, rethinking that or pushing a little bit harder. We've had a mix of employers downtown. Some have been, had three-day-a-week or four-day-a-week policies for quite a while. And that helps certain, you can, you, we can look and we, we track cell phone data. We track badge swipes, things like that. You can look every week, every month. And there are certain buildings that are pretty busy and pretty full and you can see it. And then there are certain buildings that are lagging or just kind of quieter. And so the, the map downtown isn't, it's not as simple as, oh, downtown's dead or downtown's alive. It's like, it's, it's 100% in this building of pre-pandemic levels. It's 60 over here and it's 40 over here. You know, it's just, it's really kind of a patchwork. We've seen some improvements around Washington Avenue, for example. There's a few buildings on the north end of downtown that are, that are very busy. And we've also seen significant activity, retail activity in North Loop, for example. And people talk about how there's not a lot of retail downtown. Well, it's true. There's not a lot of retail on Niccollet Avenue or Niccollet Mall, but there is a lot more in Mill District and other parts of the city. And there's been a little bit of resurgence recently in Loring Park and, and parts of the city too, that are, you know, we're hoping that build the snowball and momentum into the future.
So one thing I've, I guess concern I've heard some people say is that maybe the, the actual value of these buildings got too high because people, you know, whether it's out of town hedge funds or whatever, were speculating and this is, what's happening now is sort of a necessary correction, if you will. Do you think, I mean, how do you respond to that idea? Is there any truth to that or?
I mean, that's, it's hard to argue with some of that thinking. I mean, because real estate markets, you know, grow pretty significantly when they're doing really well, when you see real estate return at 10 or 20% annually and see a number go up so quickly. At some point, that's gonna, there's what goes up at times economically has to come back down. We've seen this. And if you want to use an example of somebody's own home or other examples, I know it's not the same. Commercial buildings are in a different market than your own single-family home. But many of us all own homes. I owned a home in two, I bought one in 2003. That started to go up for a year or two, and then the great recession happened and the value did not go up. In fact, it came down. And so that happens in a lot of different markets. It's a supply, demand driven thing. And I think, you know, part of how I tread carefully in terms of being a business advocate, because I am one, I certainly consider myself one, is how do we do a good job in our city of supporting pro-business policies, pro-business growth policies?
What's an example of a pro-business policy?
Well, I'll tell you what, an example, one that isn't one, it was raising the Uber and Lyft and TNC drivers pay at a rate so fast that Uber and Lyft said they were going to shut down service here.
Yeah.
So do, so explicitly doing things that from a city council standpoint, that put us out on an island, that make us a place where people are going to either refuse to invest resources or think twice about it. It's just, it's not a good time to do that.
Yeah.
Minneapolis is not a top five or top 10 market. We're 25, 30. We're kind of in the middle when it comes to cities and there's a lot of cities right behind us.
And when you say market, are you specifically saying like the places where, when businesses are looking to locate, they look at?
Correct. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about size, population, but I'm also thinking about some of the other things that make a city, to me, a major league city. One of the things that makes us a major league city is all the professional sports teams here. That's a huge amenity. It's the theater arts that's world-class. It's the, it's the sound school system, although some people have, you know, raised.
The one that's massive debt?
Yeah, we're, we're going through challenges in our city, but at least in the region, we have, we have, as a state, Minnesota is known for having strong schools. We have great parks. We have like world-class park system that it gets recognized consistently.
Yeah.
So you have all these things that add up to what makes a city a great city. I, you know, I, and some of its size and scale. Are we going to ever be Chicago or New York or Los Angeles?
What about Rochester? I mean, I feel like I keep reading about investment going into Rochester and they're growing. And is there any lessons that you think Minneapolis can learn from Rochester?
There are. And I think one of the main lessons that if I could be so bold is to talk a little bit about how the public sector interacts with the private is to look at how the city council and other decision-makers like Olmsted County and the legislative delegation down there works with the Mayo Clinic. The Mayo Clinic is the engine that drives the economy of Rochester. And Mayo Clinic is not treated like some evil company that's just out to hurt their employees and try to cut corners and do, and do things that are, are harmful to workers in the community. They're not treated that way.
Yeah.
And I would ask that, I hope companies in downtown Minneapolis don't get treated that way either. At least that's not the presupposition going into the conversation is, oh, these companies are just the deep-pocketed for-profit corporations and they don't care about our community. Of course they do. I'm, I'm here to tell you, every company does. They have to think about their employees. Do they have to think about the shareholders? Of course, they have to make money. That's part of the system that we have. But they're also there to think about their employees, the families, the community that we serve in a, in a way that the community is a necessary partnership. They have to work with the mayor. They have to work with the city council. They have to work with other entities that impact the city. And at times Minneapolis has, has acted like and tried to act like we're this parochial city and we can do what we want to for ourselves. And that's where I brought up the Uber Lyft policy, but it's not the only example. It's, it's rent stabilization, rent control. It's other approaches to really tricky issues. They act like they're, we're in a vacuum here in Minneapolis and everything we do impacts the broader region and impacts the state. You could, it's not, it's not a given that we're going to have a great economy and a great, strong economy here in our state. But it's, I guarantee you, we won't if we start doing things in Minneapolis that hurt jobs and hurt employers.
So as far as the Uber Lyft issue goes, I mean, one of the things I thought was like, it can't just be a city issue that if you're going to make a law, it needs to be statewide, right? Because then it, it, I mean, I've never figured out how they would monitor that, like traveling from St. Paul to here and how you track the rates and blah, blah, blah. But you also mentioned the rent control. What, we haven't heard about that in a while. Is that still something you think might raise its head here or?
I don't think so. And largely in part because of what a disaster it's been for St. Paul. And you look at the impacts of development, housing development. Again, it's not the only thing that's stopping housing units from being built in other parts of the region. But it's playing a big role in that conversation. Again, and there is, there's still a spillover effect from St. Paul doing it because some of these projects depend on private financing. And if you're an investor or somebody who's making big decisions about where to spend money. You look at Minneapolis-St. Paul, sometimes people from out east or out west look at us as one region. They don't think of us as, oh, well, I'll spend money in Minneapolis, but not St. Paul. Some people with more of a better sense of the local landscape will make those decisions that way. But I, to, to your point, I don't, I don't think it's coming forward in Minneapolis. I think the mayor's had a pretty strong position on it that, where he's coming from. And I think that the council, I don't think that there's the support on the council to do rent stabilization, fortunately.
Yeah, St. Paul is having some real struggles. And I was just reading, I forget the name of the building, but the city just condemned it.
Yeah, the Alliance Center, yeah.
Alliance Center. And it's kind of in limbo because the bank who has the mortgage doesn't want it. And then whoever owns it kind of walked away from the taxes. So it's, looks like it, I mean, one possibility that they want to avoid definitely is the city taking over the building. But even to rip it down is millions of dollars. Yeah. So I mean, I, I hope, you know, Minneapolis doesn't have any situations like that on the horizon.
Agreed. And that's another example, not to, you know, I wish St. Paul well. I work with Joe Spencer over there. He runs the St. Paul Downtown Alliance. I think they are working on some good, good concepts for how to bounce back, but they have their hands full. That one property owner, I forget his name now, the development company, I'd owned a number of properties. He passed away and that's been a real challenge for him.
Left a mess in his wake.
Right. And it's an opportunity though. If they get the right investor, hopefully they can turn their downtown around as well.
So one of the things it seems it's maybe kept people from coming downtown and exploring it is it had a reputation for having a lot of crime. But now at least some of the statistics are saying that's on the, the way down. So what is the, I guess I would ask, you know, what do you attribute that to? Because I feel like the downtown improvement. improvement district has some programs like safety ambassadors and stuff. So I'm curious if that's having the, uh, the intended impact. But then, you know, how, how will the downtown council sort of shift perceptions in the larger public that, you know, it's safe to come downtown?
Yeah, I, I think we're essential to that narrative and I think it's a couple of things all happening at once. First, it's doing that work day-to-day that is layered and holistic and a good approach to public safety where the police department and emergency response plays one role, but then so do other things like our ambassadors who greet people when they come downtown. So you feel safe and welcomed to our street outreach workers who are either sometimes contracted, but we also have team members for the DID that, that work with us directly to our Nicollet, uh, security pilot program that we tried last year. That was a first of its kind, really successful to the degree that the downtown improvement district said, let's keep doing that.
Tell me more about that. What, what exactly was the program?
Yeah, it's two security officers, Calvin and Mike, who are great guys and the right fit for the right area and built relationships with people and have had hundreds of thousands of interactions with people from livability issues to, um, you know, taking weapons away from people while they're on the verge of attacking somebody or assaulting people. Uh, great success stories and lessons learned in terms of our approach to layered safety. Because again, you don't want the, to everything be reliant upon calls to police or calls for emergency response. First of all, the department is so stretched that oftentimes, as people know around the city, the backlog of getting a call returned can be a challenge, but more importantly is having the right response meet the right issue. And downtown has had its share of, um, you know, challenges when it comes to mental health and addiction and people that are just not doing well or unhoused and moving through and in a period of transition. And we offer lots of different services for that. We have the Nicollet Community Space where it's an open space. You can go use the bathroom, you can go charge your phone, you can, uh, go play some board games on Nicollet Mall and things of that nature that sometimes it's just a good relief from their day. To our storage facility, uh, that we have in, in the ramp, in Ramp B, uh, over off of, of Second Avenue near Target Field where if you are between, uh, housing situations and you need your stuff stored, you can, you can essentially store your things, your belongings.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a neat service. We started again as a pilot a couple of years ago. It succeeded and was, uh, something that we built into, you know, longer term, we're trying to figure out how to fund it and keep it going, but, uh, for now it's an important service. So we really, and, and our team is working as closely with Hennepin Health and, and healthcare facilities as well as, uh, heading home Hennepin and some of the homelessness response work. So everything that we do, we try to coordinate with those partners from BCR, the Behavioral Crisis Response Team, to the Hennepin Social Worker Program. So if people are going through tough times, we can try to connect them with services. Some people don't want to be connected with services too, and that's a, that's its own challenge. But I'll go back to earlier, you talked about working with other cities. We had these groups from, uh, Raleigh-Durham and, and I had lunch with one of them and they said, where are the homeless people downtown? You guys don't have any. And I said, it's funny you should ask that because for us, we feel like we're, we see people going through that challenge more now than we ever have been. But they're still, to an outsider, to somebody who does, who lives or somewhere from a warmer climate where they're used to seeing a lot of homeless people in their downtown. They just said, there's, there just are not a lot of people who are unhoused here. And so that's a part of it, uh, about public safety. The other thing I'll say is.
So how, so the original question, how are you getting the news out to, you know, people who maybe haven't visited downtown in a long time that they should be coming back downtown, that they're safe? And, I mean, I know there was great attendance for, I think, that last Taste of Minnesota, so at least some people are seeing that they can do it. Um, but is there other campaigns going on to?
There are. So it's a couple, one, there's just general, uh, outreach we do to try to draw people for our summer downtown campaign. That's a bunch of advertising work, social media outreach, other things that we do where we put paid resources behind it to try to get people to come downtown. I try to speak about this issue in almost every place I go to, whether it's a small group or a large group or the news media. But what I've also learned is to talk about public safety is actually to kind of ring the alarm bell about public safety. And the best way for people to come downtown and experience it themselves, that's the way for them to turn a corner and say like, oh, you know what? I went to the orchestra the other night and I felt safe. I went to, uh, you know, I went to the office on a Monday. I don't normally go on a Monday and it was, it was busier downtown than I would have guessed. All the way to, I came down for Taste, which is another good example, or the more recent example for us is Holidayz. We had sixty-five thousand people come, which is a great turnout number. We were hoping for a little bit more, but that, feel pretty good for that being the number. I can't tell you how many of our attendees told us in both verbally and anecdotally, but also in survey data. That was the first time they'd been downtown in a long time and they had a great experience. So having that experience is really, I think, where people turn a corner and will be, you know, repeat customers, come back.
So I think I saw that they've, um, started giving out those grants to artists to activate like storefronts and stuff. Is that underway already or is that still coming and has it, is it showing? I mean, can you see it?
I think it's underway. I'm not sure that those dollars have, have hit the, both the businesses or the artists themselves yet. Uh, we were actually just in a meeting with, with Ben Johnson from the city's Arts and Culture Department. He's the one who administers those dollars. It's similar to the vibrant storefronts work that we're doing, but it's, it's slightly different. And I think that that's gonna continue to build some momentum. But what I'll say about it is the areas they're focusing on, both Loring Park and Harmon Place, as well as, uh, the warehouse district and First and Second Avenues. That's where we've seen quite a bit of uptick in activity. There's been a lot of movement over there. A huge success story, and I want to give recognition to them, is the Kickerneck Building. Kristi Omen, local owner, beautiful building. Uh, I remember meeting with her when she first bought it. She goes, I never thought I would be able to afford a building downtown, but the price came down to such a degree that I could afford it and I'm really interested in investing. So now they have an art gallery. They went from having one tenant when she started to now having over thirty tenants. The building is over half occupied. This is one of these buildings that in that same Business Journal story I mentioned earlier, it was on the radar for almost totally empty building, right? And so she's turned it around. That's spun up some momentum. There's a restaurant that just went in there. There's a handful of new restaurants that have announced over in the warehouse district. We have retail, this new cool store, uh, Hermine on First Avenue. It's a kind of a, uh, cool little, um, I think it's a, uh, what do you call it? Uh, kind of a hipster, uh, thrift store kind of thing, uh, model. As well as just a bunch of cool new restaurant stores and storefronts that are being developed over there. And I think the warehouse district is just gonna keep building some strong momentum.
Well, I don't, I don't think I'm familiar with the Knickerbock Building, so I'll definitely have to, Kickerneck, Kickerneck. Uh, get down there and, and see it. Um, so one other, uh, prominent, uh, issue that keeps kind of hitting the press is this idea of converting some of the empty office space into residential units. So what are your thoughts on that? Is that going to, is that a part of downtown's plans for revitalization and, um, what, is it really feasible, I guess? And what's the timeline of some of those conversions?
It very much is a big part of our plan, the twenty thirty-five, our long-range plan called Downtown by Design, where we need to think of adaptive reuse for the spaces that are not, uh, in as high a demand today as they once were. I think the harder question for our downtown is we have a handful of very modern office buildings that are built to be Class A and Class B office space. They're not really built to be residential or hotels or have other uses. So what do we do in those spaces? I'm thinking of City Center is one that gets talked about a lot. I'm thinking about the Ameriprise Building. It just uh, sold for a, a huge discount. And the new ownership group is excited about the opportunity, but they're thinking to themselves, is office the future? Do we invest some money in here? Is something, is an adaptive, you know, different approach a better move? The older buildings that are better fits for that, the Flower Exchange, the Granite Exchange, those sorts of buildings. I think there's some good prospects for some conversions. They're likely on a smaller scale.
Yeah.
They just are. And, and a huge part of that would be the, uh, conversion or the catalyzing underutilized building credits, the Cub Credit as it's called around the, the state capitol. That tax credit program would play a big role. But that being said, the North Star Center and the Groove Lofts that were just completed and opened, that was done with a historic tax credit, a different program. And so I think a lot of people are watching that Groove Lofts project. That was a Sherman project. It's being leased now. I'm not sure exactly where they're at. I'd be happy to kind of check in with them. But if it, if it shows some success in the core, our idea is to keep bringing more people here. And, and the Met Council forecasted another eighty thousand people in the city of Minneapolis by twenty fifty. I think half of that number should be downtown. And to grow that downtown population is gonna, that's gonna help replace some of that vibrancy and day-to-day activity that you used to see with office workers, but have people live downtown.
I, I have a hard time believing any numbers out of the Met Council personally. Um, there were some, uh, business or landowners who were kind of pushing the state to, you, you mentioned the, you called it, I think, Cub?
Yeah.
Uh, but getting like more tax breaks, more incentives for, um, landowners to, to help them do conversions. Uh, I think that's probably like an ongoing thing right now. Do you know anything about that or?
Yeah, that's something that's moving at the state legislature. We strongly support it. I know a lot of groups around the city are, the mayor of St. Paul, Minneapolis have been loud proponents of it. But it also impacts communities around the state. So if you live in a smaller community and you have a, an old school that's not being used, can you convert that? Or if you have an old, uh, you know, a historic downtown and you have some commercial property that's ripe for redevelopment. It would have a broader use than just downtown Minneapolis and St. Paul, but we would be, uh, a big beneficiary for it. And again, I would make the argument that those property tax impacts. There's a way in which, yes, there'll be less commercial property. It would be a residential space, but there would still be a recoup in value. And if we convert, let's say we convert eight or ten million square feet of res, of commercial into residential, then we're doing, uh, we're having the dual effect of both building up the residential population and lowering the vacancy because the, the spaces are gonna be occupied with, with, with people instead of with commercial space. So then that'll help the commercial market be a little bit more competitive too.
Right, right. Um, so one big, uh, issue, and I, I know you have the whole, I, I want to get back to that downtown improvement district. They're looking at trying to form something similar in Uptown. And so there's been a lot of talk about that model recently. Um, so I'm curious, you know, how effective it's been downtown. And then, um, you know, what are some of the pros and cons of keeping some of these functions public versus managed through a business improvement district? I mean, you mentioned earlier about the, um, you know, the security guards that you have on Nicollet and, you know, so it's kind of turning some of the security functions from being public to private. And so what are some of the pros and cons? And is there advice that you would give to like the Uptown folks when they're looking at this?
Yeah, great question. I think there's a lot of pros. The, the cons would be building that consensus amongst the business community that they all support it, that that's the real important part. And I think that's where I, I give a huge hats off to my predecessors, both my predecessor Steve Kramer and the others at the DID, Sarah Harris and, and Beth Shogren, the people that ran the organization when it first started. Cause at first, the first few years, it was tenuous. Some business supporters really supported the DID, loved it, bought into it and some opposed it and were pretty loud, outspoken opposition.
Why, what were some of their reasons? Why would they be against it?
To them at the time, they felt like they were being double taxed. And so if you're paying both your own property taxes and then this other assessment, you're saying, well, why am I paying so much? And what am I getting for that? And it wasn't, I think, until there had been built-up services that showed the value and, you know, some of us had, in this work could, could do some, can show some of this now. We could show you what, uh, the impacts of the ambassadors are. We can show you the impacts of all the interactions of our street outreach employees are and those sorts of things. There's actually ways to measure that in a, in a real meaningful way. But at first it was, we had to prove the concept. So I think there was just some skepticism that there were getting value for all the, the dollars they were paying in assessments.
So you have some like a set training method for, you know, what's happening down there and like a database of some sort that?
We do. We have really sophisticated software. So in fact, uh, everybody from our ambassadors track all their work. Uh, how many blocks they clean and some, we do things like we measure how many pieces of gum people scraped off the sidewalk.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, it's a statistic. And then, and then we also, what we do with some of those graffiti removal, things like that. We, we also do then is we uh, award and recognize our best ambassadors. We have ambassador of the year and like, and it's, it's kind of a bit of a friendly competition between them to see who can do the most. And so, yeah, then we measure how much trash we pick up from the street and that sort of thing. So it's really a pretty cool system. And what I would say is to the Uptown folks is, you know, take a look at what's working from our vantage point, the St. Paul group, uh, St. Paul Alliance does a good job too. They also use Block by Block as a vendor for the ambassadors. And so that's one way. And then think about what it is you really want to focus on. Do you want to focus on the safety component? Is it cleaning up? Is it, uh, tree planting and, and flowering and beautification, streetscape? You might want to focus on one of those things for a couple of years and then say, okay, once we've established a benchmark of safety, now we want to get into this other part. And, uh, I wish them well in their endeavor.
I, I think that's, uh, though, an important, uh, point to keep in mind is that it took years to get your business improvement district up and running and have all these metrics and all these things. And at least in the Uptown area, you know, they're, they're at the beginning of the race, right? And try, and it really is sort of a race to keep businesses there and bring them back. Um, so what, one, uh, final question or towards the end here.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, what, uh, does the downtown council actually endorse any candidates, uh, for races like the mayor or the city council or state? And then, um, yeah.
Historically, we have not. And I don't think, I don't, uh, expect to change that, that, uh.
Can you even as a nonprofit, I guess? I mean, I don't know how that works.
It's a good question. I, in, in general, I would think that the answer is no. And since we do some work with the city, we're in a position where we need to interact with all the council members, uh, whoever is the mayor, we want to have a strong working relationship with them. That being said, uh, our members are really involved in the election. They're involved that way, sometimes as their own businesses and certainly they sometimes as individuals, CEOs of certain companies get involved and their employees get engaged and that sort of thing. And we encourage that. It's important for our members to be at the table because we want our issues to be heard and our point of view to be respected and understood well. And we think that, you know, when all said and done, we'll have a better city if business can work with labor and if, you know, business community can work with the general community. Our, all, all these things that we work on from public safety to downtown real estate to economic vitality, they're all connected. We work on transit and transportation policy, uh, pretty significantly as well and have voice historically. So all these issues matter a whole lot to the city. We're gonna keep trying to make our voices heard. What I thought a little bit about going into this election year is how can we potentially partner with groups like, um, the Citizens League or uh, maybe some media outlets or maybe somebody like you, uh, Terry, with, with your forum. How can we bring people together around issues and have issue forums or do that sort of work? So we've kind of been having some of those conversations. There's always gonna be these outside groups like All of Minneapolis and Minneapolis for the Many or, you know, there's another couple of new, new groups popping up this year. And that's a healthy thing. That's important for city to kind of work through those dynamics. But, you know, I wish all the candidates well who are running for office. I know what it's like. I've worked on campaigns and supported other people. It's a big sacrifice. And hopefully we have really great candidates. It seems like there's a lot of people excited about the election, which is a good thing. The one thing that we have talked a lot more about is should city elections think about being an even-year elections instead of odd? Uh, seeing St. Paul move that direction with their charter. And I think that that's a good discussion worth having. I was at an event about a year ago and I was speaking off the cuff and I was answering a question and I said something like, you know, if council members are gonna make decisions that have broader impact, we should have elections where more people are voting in them. And, and the whole room started clapping for me. I was not expecting that. I was just like, oh, there's, there's a real interest in that idea. And I think that's an idea that I think we should give a little bit more attention to.
I, I'm completely on board with that. And, uh, I would also like to see them really think hard about this caucus system that they have.
Completely agree with you on that. That's, I think that the caucuses, and I'm somebody who, I've been involved in the DFL party for twenty-five years. I remember going to my first precinct caucus in two thousand and two. And they used to be a place where it was easy for anybody to plug into and get involved in and get active in. And I think over time, what a lot of people have experienced is it's a place where people who have the most amount of time and the, and the strongest interest.
Right.
Or the most passionate views are the ones that kind of crowd out other people. And it's, it's gone from being inclusive to more exclusive. That's a little bit of a broad brush. I'm not saying that that's the case for all caucuses, but generally I've seen that in a lot of places, both in Minneapolis but around the state. And people are frustrated with that kind of model. I think the outcomes we want are a little bit more balanced. And so we should think about a governance model and a, and a process that's, that's more balanced too.
Yeah. I mean, even just to, to modernize it, I mean, this system of like, you know, write down. Yeah, I mean, even just to, to modernize it, I mean, this system of like, you know, write down on a piece of paper or whatever. And then we'll take it into the, the room and count it and enter it. I mean, it just, it seems very antiquated to me and.
Or, or walking sub-caucuses for proportional representation. Yeah.
Like, we're the dignified city sub-caucus. I'm like, what is that? How do you get a delegate? Like, I don't, some of that I don't understand. Um, so give me, uh, one thing that you think, uh, if I were to pack my family into the car and go downtown, what's a good, uh, thing we should check out and see right now? I mean, I know it changes given the time of year, but, um, what's, uh, what are you looking forward to? What should we come down to see?
Sure. A couple of different things that I try to refer everybody to is I love the Mill City Museum, so try to make some time to go there. Uh, try to find a great restaurant or two, either some iconic ones that have been around a long time or a newer place. As a newer small business, find a local entrepreneur that you can support. I'm a big sports fan, so I always try to hit up Timberwolves, Twins, Vikings games. Uh, and then theater and arts are a huge part of why people come downtown. Uh, but in terms of kind of hidden gems, you know, PV Plaza is a beautiful place to go spend some time, walking up and down Nicolet Mall is great. Trying to spend some time along the river. And I thought now longer term, we're trying to make the river more of a featured part of downtown. Not like a hidden gem that you have to navigate through a jungle of buildings to get to.
Well, I know the, you know, I mean, you got to dream big, I guess, but the mayor's idea of kind of taking over the post office seems pretty far fetched. I mean, I, I don't know what it would end up being because it's a massive building and, but, um, I, I don't know that there's any chance of that happening.
Fingers crossed. I mean, stranger things have happened. The, the crazy thing is you pick up the newspaper and you learn more about, okay, this is what the federal government is doing with this portfolio of its businesses or, or real estate now. So you never know.
You never know, yeah.
And what's, what's frustrating for those of us who've worked on this a little bit is St. Paul converted their post office. Chicago has a beautiful historic post office that was, that was renovated and, and converted. So these things have happened elsewhere. It's like, why can't we do that here? It's such prime real estate. And so some of us are going to keep working at it. It's definitely a longer term, tougher shot. The other thing I'd encourage people to do is, is do a staycation. I've done this a few times with my wife. I've done this a few times with wife and family. Stay in a hotel downtown and just, even if you live in the city or live close, it's kind of fun. You see the city differently. You can stay out late and you have a place to stay and wake up. And the hotel businesses certainly appreciate the business, but also it's just kind of a fun way to, to see the city. It's a little bit more of an economical vacation than flying somewhere as well.
Um, so one, one final, final question, I guess, that I just thought of is, you, you know, you were talking about the sporting events. My, uh, my son was actually at a Twins game last night. Timberwolves, right? They're going to be in the playoffs. So I have two questions. One is how, like, how big of an impact does it have for the downtown? When something like, um, the Timberwolves makes the playoffs? And then what role do you think the city should have if they decide they want a new stadium? Or facility?
Save the easiest question for the end.
You don't have to answer. I know we're over time. You gotta go.
I'm happy to. I don't, I can't put an exact dollar amount to each game, but I know for example, that we had many more extra weeks of busier restaurants, hotels that were full, especially because we're, in being in the Western Conference Finals, you have ESPN coming here. You have national, uh, visitors coming to the game. People fly in for games like that, which is different than just your regular run of the mill playoff. You know, first round playoff game. We'll get a little bit of that, I, I believe in a week or two, just with the Lakers in our first round. I think that's going to be a huge draw. It's going to be potentially LeBron James's last game if we eliminate them from the playoffs.
Wow, yeah. That'll be, uh.
But it, so it has a big role and it plays a big role in our economic impact. And both, I heard about it from general managers of hotels and restaurants last year. To your question about the arena, I think that the city should, I would say this about a baseball stadium and a Viking stadium. And I, I lobbied for those things and past roles when I worked for the construction trades. These sorts of amenities are so important that we just have to help make it happen. And I know that there is less of an appetite today than there ever has been to reward, uh, you know, billionaire owners or, or help subsidize pro sports because of the economics of it. But I'm here to tell you that it means so much for our city and our social fabric to have those things here and to have those events here. Whether that's, you know, we drew nine million attendees to events last year. About a third of them came to sporting events. Twins, Timberwolves, Lynx and Vikings. And without that, that's so much less vitality and, and energy downtown. So you have that aspect of it. You have the corporate sponsorship element of it where it keeps the business community excited to be here. And they have places to bring their clients and their employees and those sorts of things. And I'm told pretty, pretty loudly that both, uh, the, both new owners, uh, Mr. Laurie and Mr. Rodriguez, they don't want public money for their facility. They probably want help with the infrastructure or the streets around it or the planning work that has to go into it. That they'll help finance the arena and hopefully that that's the case and we can, we can figure out a place in downtown that, that works for them.
Okay. So is there any, uh, topic that we didn't get to cover today that you wanted to touch on at all?
Oh man, I know, we did talk a little bit about economic impacts. And the one thing I should just add is that we have a new department at the downtown council, the Economic Development Work that Lisa Midag leads. And it's both part of vibrant storefronts, but we also have an online toolkit and a map of downtown where you can go on down. You can go on a map and see by geography, the vacancy and occupancy, um, percentage of, of retail, of commercial and of all these different spots in downtown. It's a cool tool. It's in the process of being tried out for the first time. And it's again, one of these things where we're thinking about, how do we measure where we are and think about where we're trying to grow?
Well, who's the, who's that tool directed towards? I mean, it might be kind of interesting for me, but I mean, I'm probably not going to go and lease a couple of floors because I see they're empty.
Well, one of the groups we just talked to about it is a, is a company that's doing an economic impact statement on the impact of building US Bank Stadium. It's a vendor who wants to do that. So it's anything from a commercial real estate developer to potential investor. It's, it's, the sky's the limit in terms of who the audience is for that. More than anything, it's also a tool for us to measure where we are and think about where we're, where we're trying to go. And the downtown council has done this a long time, in a lot of different ways. We're not, this isn't new in that way. We had a, a website called The Big Dig or The Big, it was, it, not Big Dig, but it was, uh, The Big, it was a big construction measurement of how much development happened over a certain period of time. And so trying to reset some of where those metrics are and where we're trying to see that growth. Cause, uh, right now, the, the pipeline for some of these bigger economic development projects isn't as, as robust as it ought to be. And I'm, I hear that from area architects, from the construction folks that I know well. There's some projects that are being talked about, like the Hennepin Healthcare Project and, and a potential NBA arena. But other than that, uh, you know, we have ways to go to try to think about how to redevelop some of the, the areas of downtown that, that could use it.
Well, good luck. You know, I think, uh, you know, I have a little bit better understanding of, um, why downtown is, is so important and, you know, some of the things that the downtown council is doing to attract people. So I appreciate you coming on today.
Thanks for having me. I just encourage one last thing. If people want to get involved in our work, it's www.mplsdowntown.com. We have our twenty thirty-five long range plan on the website, whereas transparent of an organization as any, we get random emails from, here's my suggestion for what you do downtown to very specific pointed inquiries. Get engaged with us, uh, and look at, at plugging into both coming downtown and helping to make our downtown even better than it is today. Appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity.
You're welcome.